...in the meeting today as Mr. Shound, the voice has sort of went away. So we'll open up the meeting at three minutes after nine. Please silence or shut off your cell phones and if you would join us in the Pledge of Belief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or deletions to the agenda this time?
I have no changes.
There's none? Okay. Nine o'clock hasn't arrived. Is there any changes that you know of, Mr. Burnstori?
That I'm aware of.
None that you're aware of?
It's already a little late. I had to last so, uh, burn.
Oh, well, I have.
All's left, but.
There he is.
Okay. Commissioner Kessler, I'm going to run the meeting today. Mr. Shound, the voice is gone, so.
I go.
So our first item, either additions or changes, Commissioner Kessler. Burnstori, welcome.
Thank you.
Come right up to that chair there, sir. And you're the first one up. What do you have for us today, sir?
I have an offer for you. It'll be hard to turn down. And I already understand there will be no decisions made this morning, but I have the Masonic Lodge building for sale. I was parking lot out in the back. And it has been water witch for hot water on the backside of that fire block, which would offer you heat to that building plus this building. And it's gotta be sold. It's costing the old timers too much money to keep oil and water and electric and then the tax boys hit them recently down at the end of the hall. They got a pretty black lippy pen. So it's gotta go. And we'll offer that payments or even possibly the interest free or think about it.
Price range.
Who, what?
What's the price range of consideration?
Uh, it's listed right, well, I just pulled it off list. There's nobody has holes on it for sale right now. A hundred and twenty-eight it was listed for. No, nobody even looked. So we're up against a brick wall out the public side.
I've been through it and we've all been through it.
Yeah.
Do you remember how many square feet it is?
No.
You don't?
It is pretty good size. Now, here's the other thing, to bring, to bring water over here, the hot water, there is a, a space underneath the main floor in that building, about as high as this table that you're sitting at. You run all your water lines, everything underneath and still not disturb the building.
But the hot water hasn't been developed yet.
It has not been developed.
Well, at this point.
Who was it that witched it?
Pardon?
Who witched it?
That would be Chuck Shelton before he died. He was good, I've seen.
Do we know if there's any pending water rights by anybody else?
As far as I know, it's all free and clear, but it wouldn't take too long to check. If you guys are serious.
I'm not saying much, Vern, I end up starting to cough if I.
Oh, okay.
I have a lot of thoughts going on. I'll use Commissioner Kessler's idea of hand sanitizer.
Boy, you're not sounding good at all.
Yeah.
After part of the shift.
Yeah.
So.
Noreen, Noreen told me that she fed him out, sent him a fried frog legs and that's why he had to vomit.
Get a little jumpy there.
What, what kind of issues do you deal with with the building that we would be going into if we was to consider it? And I, I don't know, I'm, I'm fishing to try to figure.
The last time I was master of that lodge, we put a brand new roof on it and I see the people at the store went to the same company and put a new roof on their building also.
I'm told that is same company that put ours on it.
Oh, really?
According to.
It's a rubber thing about a half inch. So it's, you got a good roof to start by.
And did you mention that that's a building inside of a building or?
Yes, it is. You could actually go inside, but see then you're defeating your hot water lines than any other electric lines or whatever to come over here and we'd have to ditch it across the street, but we got wide open space underneath that floor. We use a creeper like you worked under a car and we can go all the way from the back alley to the front sidewalk.
Yeah, I've never seen the raised floor.
So we're gonna be easy to work with because in the Masonic Lodge in Clima Falls, Crater Lake Lodge two eleven owns the building now. And those old timers didn't like the expense of that building. It's just, it's sitting there eating up any value that there is in the property. But I just had to circle the place. You got the parking around here and there's a parking lot to go through this thing.
My, my only thing, Vern, besides price, and price is need the first thing, is I think first we have to identify a need for.
Need?
A need.
I, I know a need, but you're looking at just the building to put somebody, some of your employees in. I'm looking at heat for this building, which would save the county money for years.
Oh, I, I, I don't doubt that, that we'd have to deal with.
And parking.
The retrofit cost for that, but yes, it'd be worth considering, looking at.
That's what I'm here for. Give it some serious thought because it's gotta go. The old boys sit in that meeting there in Clima Falls and they're not happy.
Well, we can empathize.
So you got a wide open field. Make it offer however you want and I have to take it to the old boys if you get too angry.
Well, Vern, I, I'll have to say the same as Commissioner Shound, we, we have to have the need. I understand the hot water side of it. That's potential the cost to develop that and all that.
Mm-hmm.
We, we pushed around different things last time we looked at it, you know, from one department to the other department. We're in the process of remodeling the courthouse right now and fully utilizing the space here if we're able to. And so I'm sitting here, you know, trying to think of which one of the agencies is.
Your department heads will show you the need. I understand that. But there's a lot more than just needs of a department back here.
Well, if you have a suggestion on what departments might need it, let's hear it. I mean.
You have a lot of departments and you've got some still out there paying rent.
Mm-hmm.
And I would say you need to listen to those department heads that are out paying rent on buildings that they're here.
One of those departments will be here eventually.
Is that right?
Within the next year, we anticipate they'll be in here, in the limo. The other department, and I would defer to Commissioner Kessler somewhat, within the coordinated care, and I apologize, the coordinated care organizations, before we would consider the movement of that department, we have to consider all of the care operations that we would look at, you know, for, for movement. We have a building over here that mental health owns and lives in, resides in, so we're not paying rent. We own it free and clear. Over here, we're paying rent. So I, I agree with you, but there's a lot of things that have to kind of get meshed together to figure out the best for the county operations.
And reliability.
Yes.
So this is so handy. It would make an annex that would just.
The accommodating staff and things like that is one issue. I'm kind of still stuck on the hot water, I think, if there is potential. I had to kind of validate that, but what is the potential, not just heating this building, but how can we help the overall community? I'll, I'll give that to our treasurer to analyze.
Now, you, you, you guys realize that there is already hot water being introduced over swimming. I would expect you would tap into something in that same area, that same aquifer. And as far as I know, there's no end to it, that aquifer.
There's some things, we just have somebody assign and look at all the direct and indirect impacts.
Yeah, you gotta develop the geothermal and then you have to reinject it. There's all kinds of things go along with it. You have, they'll get the water right and the whole works. That's something to look into. Just a block away from there, like you say, is the city and they are doing some work on their geothermal right now. And so geothermal is great, but it doesn't come for free. There's a lot of developmental cost.
For years to come, it's free.
Well, this, maybe there's something we can talk with the town on.
You need to really seriously think about it outside of putting one of your departments inside the building. This morning, I needed the parking lot. There's, look, I had to circle the place.
Maybe we should buy the rights to the well and a right away under the building.
If you don't. We've, the only offer we've had, what is it, about four years that I've been selling this building and property?
Actually longer than that.
All they wanted was the parking lot. I says, sell you the parking lot, we just throw in the building for free.
Paying out for the parking lot?
Yeah.
But we're talking payments. We're talking maybe interest free if you don't get too greedy.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a lot of auctions here, so. And I know you're not gonna make a decision this morning, so you've got plenty to think about.
We do.
Appreciate that.
It's good to see you, Vern.
Thanks, Vern.
Take care.
See you later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll take it under consideration, man. Next item, we have, we have, which very, very proud to present, second year in a row, we have the Gold Safety Award to Lake County, injury frequency rate of zero in fiscal year thirteen fourteen with ninety-five full-time employees. C I S gave this to the Board of Commissioners at, at our meeting and conference and we just like everybody know how proud we are of our employees and everything. And so Jay, I know that you do our interns, so we'd like to put this with other one. And this is two years in a row, so.
Yeah, it's.
Are you familiar with what C I S stands for?
Zero time locks.
Not sure. Safety County Insurance Services.
Yeah, so do you know how many of these they gave out?
Very few.
Very few, right. So, I mean, two years in a row, very good for the county. It's, we're gonna see a good, you know, positive impact on our underwriting and our rates next year, so.
We need to share that, Jay, with our employees as far as what their attitude and their, their daily efforts towards safety.
Yeah, you know, this kind of thing only happens when you have a, a culture of, especially those departments like Rick, Rick Demilleus, Paul and Phil McDonald, Paul, Paul and Phil McDonald, Dave Berman, you know, those, those departments that have a greater risk of injury. You know, things happen and.
Well, there were counties that didn't give the silver, the bronze, or even the purple, which purple was like fifty percent of them were.
Yeah.
Had lost time. They really blow that, so.
It's, it's good. Those department heads are doing a good job.
Yeah.
You know, when, when we have had accidents in the past, four, five, three years ago, they've taken measures to make sure that doesn't happen again.
It was outstanding.
Yeah, there's two things to note. One is employees, I think, and safety, that's good for them, good for us. Also, less claims, the insurance premiums and things, those down, they've had burglies, they go up, so it's a cost savings also.
Yep, so I'm, I'm with the other two commissioners. Our department heads and our employees need to know how much we appreciate your good work.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Our next item, Budget Committee Member Recommendation, John Jones is on here. Dan, this is you.
Yes, we had a budget committee opening. Every year we have one, they're staggered three-year terms. And during meetings last year, we thought John Jones had moved on to some smoother waters for fishing. And then Dan talked to him in Paisley and it sounded like he was willing to do another term. Either he forgot what he talked about for fishing or he just thought, yeah, I still, I still like doing that. So after advertising in the paper, on the website too, right Denise?
Correct.
Um, we didn't receive any other letters of interest as far as I know. And so John Jones is agreed or is willing to serve another term if you are willing.
Okay, that's on our agenda for tomorrow, so I, I will make that appointment tomorrow.
Okay, and so his new term expiration would be December two thousand seventeen. The next one up would be Tom Burcota next year, so.
To put in media, we have three members, Citizen Lodge and three members of the Board of Commissioners serving as the Budget Committee. John Jones said we have, we have Tom Burcota and Tilly Keon.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Commissioner Kessler, do you know if Ben's coming over?
He told me he was coming over.
He is coming over?
Well, the other day he told me he was.
Okay, so you have to move on down to Planning Commission Member Recommendation, Planning Director Darwin Jones. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
I guess we all should congratulate you on.
Yes, congratulations.
Healthy baby being born.
Thanks, yeah.
Congratulations.
Baby's home, mom is home and both are doing great. Sleep is about the same as normal, as the whole family, so, all right. So tonight, there is a planning commission meeting scheduled and we're, we're gonna struggle to have a quorum, but at this point, I've, I've got enough that we will have a quorum. And the main topic is gonna be to discuss letters of interest that have been submitted for volunteering for the planning commission. And I've got two letters so far, one from Michael King, the other one from Meredith Smith, who's currently our, our chair for the planning commission. Michael King is, is there in Summer Lake area as well, off of Lakeview Lane. So hopefully tomorrow, they'll have made a decision tonight and we'll come with that recommendation tomorrow morning for your media. That's, that's all I have pretty much with that, other than just as a reminder, with Donald Parker, Patch Parker, he, he resigned the day before, I think it was, before last, this past November's meeting. So his position is also vacant at this time. Actually, the only position that's truly vacant at this time. The other positions expire, positions one and two will expire on the thirty-first of this month. And his position's position five and it was to expire two thousand sixteen. So with the two that we have applying right now, it would, it would probably be best if we even fill Patch's remaining term with either Meredith or this Michael King and then leave that, that third one that's gonna be available, the last position available, which is a south county position or geographic position that we still have. So that would be my recommendation, that would be discussed tonight, so that's pretty much of that. The other thing, I'm on your agenda for some other issue.
Yeah, you're next, sir.
Both they counted, actually.
I'll go and then I'll contribute.
But be sure to get a letter of appreciation to those actually.
Yeah, yeah, I did get that Denise for, for both Patch's time and Ronnie about a year ago, maybe a little longer now, is resigned. But we did some work to figure out exactly when they joined the planning commissions originally, so.
Okay, so your other item is down the list, so we'll move it back up. Ben, welcome, come on up, sir.
How was all today?
Good, very good, very good. You have amendment number nine.
Actually, that's a mistake, it's ten. I apologize. I caught that this morning.
Number one oh.
Number one oh.
All right, sir.
This is, basically it's the, the government's tracking system of the funds changing from the, you know, odd few years, so.
Is this because the funding's coming every year instead of following the by and in?
Yes.
So this is just getting us to where we need to be to accept the dollars?
Yep.
No other changes?
No other changes to it other than it's ten, not nine. I apologize for that.
And legal counsel's reviewed it, I'm sure?
Yeah.
And so we will act on that tomorrow unless there's other questions, it'll be.
All right.
What? Needless, wasn't it?
Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
S D F Certification Insurance, Denise.
This is our annual agreement with, for our special transportation funds, that we will, we agree to follow the rules and regulations associated with receiving federal and state monies for special transportation.
And you've reviewed every page and every paragraph of this?
We did last year, we didn't this year, but there aren't any changes, I was telling you.
There, there are no changes from last year and legal counsel's reviewed it.
Correct.
That is a lot, that's.
Seventy-six pages of.
Sure.
Fun times.
After you review the Commissioner Shound, do you have any questions?
I didn't, I didn't, I actually signed it already.
No, you didn't.
If you look at the last page.
It's all filled in, waiting your signature.
There's my page.
Your signature goes right here.
Okay.
On the blank line.
That is also on for tomorrow, so just correct it.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Kessler, how many questions you have on it, sir?
I had, I went through it last night from between one A M. and four A M.
I knew, I guess I'm.
It was spotlessly clean.
Spotlessly clean.
I don't know what spotlessly clean means, but it's.
But if there was a quiet tone.
Yeah, that would be it. All right. So we will, our next item is Darwin, he ran down the hall to fill in before he gets back. We could do a couple liaison updates. Anybody wanna jump in there? I know you're calling.
I know.
Okay, do you have any?
Uh, one thing on the Sage Con, and I sent you a message yesterday, might be a little tweaked to you. One thing that the U S Fish and Wildlife, on this spending bill that went through Congress, it came, first went through on Thursday evening and there's a writer that was placed on addressing the process of listing and not listing sage grouse, et cetera, et cetera, and it remained on it through Saturday night. I'm trying to validate just what that significance is. Yeah, it was totally missing is that it would bump, it would prohibit Fish and Wildlife Service from actually doing the paperwork to list a sage, sage grouse in September of two fifteen. It would bump it a year. That would be a good thing because it gives the Sage Con group time to finish their conservation measure and everybody else working on conservation to be considered. But I'm getting other feedback that it doesn't really bump it a whole year out, or maybe just bump it into October. But anyway, try and get that cleared out.
Out of curiosity, whenever I was reading some of that through there and they have, I think, three different species of sage grouse listed, or maybe I'm wrong, maybe there's more or less, this is the greater that we have here, what is this, the species called? I call them sage grouse or?
Yeah, what we have here is a greater sage grouse. In Utah, Colorado, they have the ginseng, ginseng grouse. And there's another little, I can't think of the name, kind of along the California ladder stretch.
So they've thrown them all into the same pot and they all taste the same when you stew them?
Well, it depends on if you use the same seasoning, yes.
Take the burr out.
I like carrots, celery and onions and garlic.
All right, I, I appreciate it, especially if you get a definition of what that really means. We, most of us tuck it as, as that within this next year, it couldn't be listed, so.
Yeah, yesterday afternoon, I got some feedback that put a lot of question with that, so I'll need to follow up on it.
Here's Darwin. And here's Darwin, you're up, sir.
All right.
Multi-county resource, one update.
So, so D L C E has now asked that counties that are interested in participating in multi-county, it's actually more of a state approach now for model zoning ordinance. The ordinance itself has already been created. Our discussion at A O C was just about some of the discretionary items, which is not my intent at all to even get into, but that was part of their approach, their being the state's approach with Anglo, who's Angelo, I think it actually sounds like. The consultant firm that, that was hired can only do four counties, possibly six, but for sure four counties all the way through the, the whole hearings process, but also taking your existing ordinance and then throwing back in your remaining zones that weren't touched and, and other language in your ordinance that, that wasn't being addressed during this process. This process is just to focus on the exclusive farm use zones. For us, it's A one and A two zones and then also how to force you, so. So by having this ordinance, we will be up to date with state code continually because the plan is, is that every time there's changes at the legislative level, then there'll be someone at D L C E, they haven't determined who yet, but would then draft how that will fit into the model code and then will just replace whatever changes are being made and move on from there. So what they're looking for, for from us, looks like they're looking at the letter that was sent out, right? So, and I apologize for not being a little more prepared on this, but they're, they're wanting either a letter of intent by resolution or, or just simply a letter of intent.
So by consensus of the board, we can send a letter?
Yeah, yeah, and they would like that by, I think, the first week of the year, so. I think it said on the bottom line, you know, that section.
So, and Darwin, you explained some of this to me individually so that I could sort of grasp on this. This would change, we would follow the model code, but we would still, there's certain properties that would not, that we have discretion on. Trying to remember what we talked about.
Yeah, so, so in state statute, primarily O R S two fifteen is, is the language that talks about these two, you know, resource zones, right? So the exclusive farm use zone and the force you zone. So there's adopted language that, you know, the legislature, you know, whomever, you know, the voters, whatever passed, that, that has to be implemented by the counties. O R S one ninety-seven, six forty-six states that county shall implement certain parts of that, no matter if we've adopted it in our ordinance or not. So a lot of times we, we play by that, you know, that language in the, in the state statutes. In this case, we're, we're going to adopt all the non-discretionary items, is my intent. And then, you know, you guys will be the final say on that. But if it's something we have to abide by as the base minimum, that's exactly why we're trying to build a model code statewide. You will remember that I shot this idea out to the eastern Oregon counties and then DLC ran with it statewide. And they funded us individually on the grant.
We already do that, because that's the law.
Yeah, but we, you go to the state statute. This way, we're going to create, you know, for each of the counties, it'll be right in the ordinance, so you're not having to hunt the pack to find where the answers are. You know, similar to, you know, what we're experiencing now with the news that's going to be before.
So if you go through this, then once that gets there, we'll have to amend or do a new ordinance that has that there.
Yeah.
For the board of commissioners, correct?
Yeah. And it, and by only adopting the, you know, discretion, or the non-discretionary items, meaning those items that we have to. Yeah, then, that are mandated, then we don't have to, you know, there's probably no appeal process at all. So that's why I don't want to get into the discretionary items, because then you're, you're going above and beyond state statute minimums. And that leaves a whole, you know, area where people could say, hey, no way, I'm not, we don't think that's best for that zone.
So Darwin, you were saying the force for sure would be helped through the whole process? And I'll say the serious part first, then I'll be facetious. It says here, the consultant will not be available to help staff the public meetings. But it also says, we're not going to start this until twenty-one fifteen of January, which is a hundred and one years away.
Yeah, they did notice that. That was a nice little typo. It was funny when I got sent around a lot of times, like, yeah, right. Yeah, they mean by next.
Just to be a few of us, that's to be enough.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're not going to help all the way through there?
Those, that, the letter that I'm hoping to get from you guys is, is that we want the help all the way through. And that we'll adopt by August, yeah. Which is very exciting, because then, so long as we get our zone ordinance done, then we can focus on.
So do you have that perhaps a letter together yet?
I will, no, I don't.
Let us know.
It's going to be seriously just a one liner. I mean, it's, I mean, yes, we plan on holding all the meetings and adopting by August with.
Get the appropriate verbiage in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'll have that for you guys tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Run it by Denise, and she'll make sure it's got the right stuff and other details. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Darwin. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you very much.
And the name of Sawyer James?
Sawyer James. Six boys. I have a hockey team now.
Whoa, wait a minute.
You have one sub.
You've got one sub.
And a sub. Yeah, well, I've got a sub for basketball as well.
Oh, you got six individual state champion wrestlers.
I don't know how that works, but, yeah, state champion wrestlers, please. I will say.
Next wrestling meet, that'll be there.
Yes, they'll be at the next number.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Late back to liaison updates, I believe is the only thing we, we have left. Do you have any more?
Nothing on the liaison. We need to, yeah, but maybe take a recess and talk about legal counsel on the planning commission.
We're going to take a ten-minute recess.
I'm.
Yeah, Donald and I have been working to see if we would have a quorum for the payment commission tonight. And there'll be a couple of folks, one like Bert has a mentor and won't be here this evening. So they're kind of, he's still trying to see if there's enough quorum for the rest. But it's a legal council decision on the topic that you guys discussed last week is if any virtue can be in this public nomination.
All right, so we'll continue on tonight as there will be a forum there, if there's not.
There won't be a meeting.
There won't be a meeting, okay. I'm planning on attending that unless there's legal counsel telling me the reason to not. And I have quite a bit of history on their work site that we've been working on that.
You'd have to be aware of, you get too much engaged and exempt you from being on any appeal.
Yes, but we are also the landowner. But this one's sort of unique. So I have email into legal counsel on the guideline.
Yeah, if they don't have a, apart from some of that, if they don't have a quorum then getting their recommendation to fill in the slots will roll over to January.
So we'll go back to liaison updates. I, I've been working with State Senator Whitson, Representative, State Representative Whitson, State Representative Vince. And I also have been in contact with State Representative McLean and State Senator Ferrioli.
On what subject?
On the, this is the closure of the state lands which takes in all Oregon's side of Goose Lake, all of Crump, and all of Hart Lake. And even up to, which is not normally where the lake bed is, it's a submersible in Swamp Land Act. And I still continue to work to try to keep public access. Been working to not have the argument about arrowhead hunting. The discussion I have is to keep public access to these lands. Senator Whitson, Representative Whitson and Representative Vince met with Director of Department of State Lands, Mary Abrams. And they had a lengthy meeting with them. I can't articulate or say exactly what went on at that meeting, but they did recommend for Director Abrams to call me. And last night I spent about an hour on the phone with Director Abrams. It was a very positive conversation. I explained several different things that I believe the reason why it should be kept open and that access should be kept open to the public. Explained to her that we were under the impression that there would be better notification and there would be more meetings before even emergency closure happened. She did apologize that the Board of Commissioners was not notified, that we found out through the Clamath article, and I told her thank you for that. She is checking into some things. She has some things going on right away, but she is planning on trying to get out here in February to build it, get on the ground. And she appreciates the rural side of Oregon. She was raised and lived on the, I know about Ray, she lived on the rural side of Oregon. So about six o'clock, we got off the phone and some very positive discussions. Their Department of State lands are still, they're, they're, they're not happy that there's not prosecution is where they keep pushing it to. And I explained that there isn't no factual evidence that I'm aware of, and they don't have any factual evidence of burial looting. There is evidence of larger arrowheads being found. And so I did explain to her the frustration of policing of my closure. It's the people that are selling arrowheads and the other things that's, that's assumed, they just moved them to a different place. They're, they're still going to do it, go to shut down these lands, they're going to publicly. She was receptive of all that. And I think that she has much more awareness of and understanding that our constituents here are coming to us and they're going to our senator and our representatives because they're, they're not happy with it. So continue to work on that. I'm working with Ulysses, I've had a couple of different discussions with Ulysses. I'll meet with him this afternoon, make him aware of what's being said one way or the other as our district attorney. It just seemed to be carrying more and more momentum, not always because of us or what we've done. But general public is getting hold of our senators, representatives.
Now, on that same subject, in my discussion with Whitson, is that DSA was looking at some ORS rules, changes and stuff. And I told him that's where we need to be really engaged on any rulemaking. I can, I can understand the emergency closure. If there's one governing body talking to the other, you will do something. But using, the phrase, using a sledgehammer to drive a tank was a little excessive. But now we really need to be engaged on any rulemaking.
Yeah, I, I guess from the meeting that we had, everything was put to us. And I know as I talked, our email back and forth to Senator Ferrioli, everything that people have been put to us is that there's almost excessive grave looting and all these things. Whenever we've got right down to it, that's people saying that's happening, but they don't have the factual evidence of that. And I, I've talked with Ulysses, and if there is grave looting and that is brought forward, he will prosecute. And there is none of us that would support such a thing.
None of us would support not prosecuting.
Well, not prosecuting, but grave looting. So anyways, it's, it's continuing to go on. I do know that Senator Whitson was trying to get an appointment with the main Oregon State Police Lieutenant. I can't, I don't know what his, his position.
To interrupt you, but on that note, I did receive a phone call from Kelsey Ferry with Senator Whitson and Representative Whitson's office. And she will be at our Tuesday meeting next week to answer any questions or concerns that you gentlemen have and take back, whatever the elders take back. So just as a heads up, she will be at Tuesday's meeting.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. As I told you the other day, Senator, I'd like to, Commissioner Castor, I did receive an email from Senator Ferrioli and a phone call from Senator Whitson. Other than kind of expressing our overall meaning, what, what happened, I did defer to you because I do know you've been working on that. And I'm glad you got ahold of Mary last night, or she got ahold of you, so that's good.
Yeah, and I will, we have our minutes in draft form. I'm going over those and the minutes will, tomorrow we'll approve them or not. And I think it would be of value for Mary to have a copy of our minutes in front of me whenever Miami and others were here.
You know what was strange out of one of the conversations, I don't remember which one, was that they referenced the state. Mary, I think, more specifically, saying, one of the concerns they had was that not all three of us were on the same page. And I said, well, I can't speak for the other two commissioners, but we all expressed the same concern about the closure in our meeting. So it would probably be good if they didn't start trying to use us against each other.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I expressed through landing that I understand that the governor and director had to do something by law. It just used a sledgehammer to grab a tank, now let's make it right from here.
You know, we're on the same page. I, Jimmy will tell you, I used the sledgehammer to do finish carpentry work.
And I said this is just wrong.
I think both of you were aware that Phil Beale here funded the misappropriations package.
Yeah.
SRS, and I sent Denise an email last night. We sent out, the board did, to Congressman Walden, a request to sign on to a letter, I don't remember which members of the house that they are. But then there was a letter that came last night, or a request that came last night to actually make contact with one or two, one of the two offices that are, that are collecting signatures. And so Denise, I think, was going to do a follow-up on that for the funding of SRS, not only in 2015, but also in 2014. Because we will go without a payment in, in January, February, when we typically receive it unless Congress takes action. And I've watched a lot of C-SPAN in the last week, whenever I've gotten a chance, and some of the tape delayed hearings. And there's a lot of people that are suggesting that it needs to happen, so.
Well, being that come January one, how Senator Lyden and Senator Mercury are not be in the majority, but where are they?
They're, they're there. And fortunately, because it affects forty-nine or forty states and seven hundred and eighty approximately school districts. It's, it's a pretty much, a pretty much a bipartisan situation.
I assume so.
Yeah.
Nothing further, we will.
Wait, you have a question? Since we're going into the holidays, we usually talk about if we want to do meetings on those Tuesdays prior to. Are you good with leaving meetings on? Like I said, we do have Kelsey coming next week for Tuesday. I don't have anything for the thirtieth other than we're gonna do the lunch for the show.
I would suggest we play it by ear. And honestly, next Tuesday, I think it's fine to have a meeting, but if it's only Kelsey coming, we need to determine if we've got stuff we want to share with her that takes the whole board to do it. Not just to have a meeting to have it.
Yeah, I don't have anything else at this time, but.
Back on the SRS, when I talked to Warner's office, it was just a case of everybody supporting, it was just a case of where to find the money. And tonight, there's a lot of pork barrel stuff that found money.
Well, I think we have to, well, I don't know if you two, you two have had the same discussions I have with Congressman Walden. But just trying to be honest, he has not been, he supports it once the package is done and those found. But I think you find that he's, he's not there. He thinks that, you know, when we go there and have that discussion, that, that it's the timber package, it's the management package that the House has passed now for two straight years that is the answer. And that SRS has gone away and pill funds the lands, the compensation for the lands. But when you ask him directly if our thirty-one cents an acre that we receive, because it's not based on per acre, but when you compare it to other counties and other states. And there are counties out there that are receiving upwards of two dollars and eighty cents or thereabouts per acre for their land that's the same as our land. He will read that pill's not fairly funded, but it's based upon a population cap. And there's a whole bunch of snafus there. And so you're right, Commissioner, there was a lot of pork that they found money for. And the one thing they'll always say to us is, we'll support it if you can tell us where to find the money. And it's like, well, when we sit down as a county and do our budgets, we don't call you up to ask you to kind of find money to fund something in the county. We find it, you're the ones that know. And that's what's so frustrating.
Well, something on the hill, there, from our population base, that needs to be along with something, because it doesn't take into account logistics.
No, well, it doesn't, just, flat just doesn't take into account all sorts of things.
So, maybe if I get the luxury of being chairman today, I usually look at the next day's agenda and go over that. Tomorrow at ten o'clock, I'll public on that. And then we have our regular business that's not timed below that. We'll, we'll adjourn, or not adjourn, we'll recess and take a break. Eleven-thirty, we have a.
Coffee.
Coffee at eleven-thirty, and that's it.
Cheers.
It varies. Commissioner Shown, you will participate tomorrow by phone on the executive session?
Yeah, we'll have to figure something out about, about that, yeah, okay.
On the executive session?
Yeah, the executive session, potential litigation tomorrow.
You're going to be able to participate on the one-thirty conference call with Harney County?
I just, I don't have the other meetings still.
Donald, let's talk more.
Yeah.
So just to get me up to speed a little bit, the one-thirty conference call, that's a joint meeting between Lake and Clamath County. Reading this, I anticipate others are going to be here also. And where I'll probably obviously be chairing the meeting tomorrow, I want to know the guidelines and what we're working on and how much interaction from the other groups that are going to be here and everything. So I'm a little bit in the dark, is what I'm telling you. So give me a briefing if you want.
I will. Basically, some of the folks that'll be here, maybe one or two from the Bayview Racing Association. Bayview Racing Association and Honda are the two co-sponsors of this consensus act. So I think maybe Mary Woodwood will be here. I don't know of anybody else, I've heard that's you, I believe.
And Mary is?
Of the Bayview Racing Association.
Okay.
Otherwise Stacy Davies would be here as the president, but he can't make it, so Mary's going to be here. And I learned Friday that Honda, being the other co-sponsor, Nick Doerbrink, will be here. But my gist is, those are the parties that are paying for this working. We have concerns about destination of lands. We have some different des, opinions between Harney and us, which it need to get on the same page of what our position is. But also the mindset is, is let this group, because it is their initiative, it is their livelihoods, proceed. If they get to a point, let's back up with that. Harney County, county objection on a proposal made. My position back to them is, let's make counter proposals and do a negotiation. If we get to a point that we cannot accept, then we force out opinion. But let's be at the table long enough to make that educated decision.
So I'm, that's probably, Commissioner, where I, I thought that we were going to be meeting in Harney County for us to sort of get our direction right with those two counties. So if the sponsors of this are going to be part of that, it'll be hard to keep it focused on between two counties without them putting in the opinion of where they want us to go. So I guess.
Maybe not select where we want to go, but maybe if Mary will articulate to the Harneys better than what you, Dan, and I can, what is the value of negotiating is where we're going. But as Vincent to Harney County, we always have the trump card to say yea and nay. But let's be at the table long enough to be educated on where the process is actually going before we use our trump cards.
So it might not hurt for you, based on the conversation I talked to Judge Grasston last Friday on the transfer of lands issue. And I didn't remember that he went to the same meeting as Commissioner Castor. And, and we did talk a little bit about that. And he's a little, just a little concerned about the running of the meetings. So it might not hurt for you to already know that, because he's, he's great with Lake County having to lead on the two counties running of it. Would you just coordinate that a little bit?
Well, it's, it's going to be technically a.
Open session, this session?
Is Honda and Bayview Racing Association will be here?
Mary Woodwood, I'm told, will be here. And then Dan Morris told me that Nick Doerbrink will be here.
So, yeah. Logistics of running the meeting with people on the phone, people there, sometimes challenging.
It's no different than any other open session. We have an audience out there. If we need a clarification, we can, otherwise it's, it's a business between Harney County and Lake County.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is you have four commissioners participating in a meeting that's, that's. I don't know if Judge Grassey, if he has heartburn or wanting to run the meeting, but.
No.
No, okay, okay. We'll run it tomorrow, we'll.
He was just concerned that if we, we wouldn't be on the same page before the meeting started.
So has anybody set up the phones for multiple people to be able to phone in?
There's only supposed to be Harney County that I know of calling.
It's a maiden thing in Harney County and Lake County.
Well, Commissioner Shown may have to call in, or may call in.
Oh, tell me, tell me what you want me to do.
Well, Denise, if it works out for me, you'll get ahold of you.
Part of you, okay.
I'll probably like call your cell phone or something like that, just listen.
Okay, sounds good, let me get that.
Plug your cell phone in, if it doesn't go down.
As it stands now, Judge Grassey will phone in to just our normal phone line, but I'll be in touch for sure.
Okay. All right, anything else? We will adjourn at eight minutes after ten.